Do we see this spotlight? Do we see this spotlight?
No.
Okay. Good evening. I would like to call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, March 24th, 2020. On behalf of the members of the school board and the superintendent, I welcome each of you present and watching. Our quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. Also joining us on the phone is our vice chair, Lisa Searls-Lawes. We will begin tonight's meeting with the place to the flag. Here, who will lead us will be Mr. Board Member, Mr. Marvin Harris. All right, I'll stand please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you. We have an abbreviated meeting due to the fact of the COVID-19 virus. But we do, we'll allow folks, again, we will have our opportunity, if there are individuals here, to come and give some comments. So during our meeting, we provide time for the public to address the board. Again, these are scheduled at the beginning of the meeting and then near the end of our meeting. Please come forward. And when you're asked to come forward, we ask you to comply with our three-minute time limit. When you begin, green light comes on, the yellow light indicates that you have 30 seconds remaining, and the red light and the beep indicates that your time is up. And we would ask that you would bring your comments to an end. So at this time, are there any cards? Are there any cards? There are any cards? There being none, we will move the agenda to our consent agenda. Item number three, 3.01, our minutes from regular session, February 18th, 2020. 3.02 minutes, work session, February 18th, 2020. 3.03 minutes, special meeting, February 18th, 2020. 3.04 minutes, joint meeting with city council, February 11th, 2020. 3.05, our financial report, revenue and expense, February 2020. Child nutrition services, February 2020. 3.06 personnel report. 3.07, our budget transfer. And 3.08, the 2020 BSBA Business Honor Rule. That is the consent agenda. Can we have a motion for approval or acceptance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
You heard the motion and you heard the second. A time for the question. There being none, Ms. Buffalo, please call the rule.
Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Mrs. Searls-Lawes.
Four.
Dr. Best.
Four.
Ms. Alger.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Mr. Ely.
Four.
Mr. Harris.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. We'll move the agenda to items number four, our action item. And, oh, Mr.?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, do you have a personnel?
No, no personnel.
Okay, no personnel, okay. Action item number 4.01, the proposed fiscal year budget approval.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair Searls-Lawes, members of the board. On March 10th, the board received a presentation on the FY 2021 proposed budget. And we have had a very good budget season, allowing the public to give us input on our budget, public hearing this evening for the, for the board. And, Mr. Chairman, at this time, we, we are recommending that the board's consideration of approving the budget as presented to the school board for the FY 2021 budget.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Parker. We had a motion for approval of the proposed fiscal year 20 budget?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the fiscal year 2021 proposed operating budget in the amount of $330,171,926. The 2021 Workers' Compensation Fund budget of $2,323,500. The Textbook Fund budget of $2,876,630. And the 2021 Child Nutrition Fund budget of $20,607,000.
You heard the motion, this is your second.
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 You heard the motion and several seconds. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Buffalo, please call a rule.
Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Mrs. Searls-Lawes.
Four.
Dr. Best.
Four.
Ms. Alger.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Mr. Ely.
Four.
Mr. Harris.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. And then we have item number 4.02, the proposed 2021 school calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the calendar was presented to the board at the February meeting by, um, Ms. Brooks. And she is requesting tonight that the board consider that FY 20, excuse me, the 2021 calendar school year be approved by the board for implementation next year. She is here to answer any questions if the board has any questions regarding the calendar.
Okay. You heard that proposed budget for our calendar, our school calendar. Can we get a motion for approval?
Motion.
So moved. You heard the motion, this is second.
Second.
You heard the motion and the second. A time for the question.
Mr. Chairman, just the, the procedural question would be, given the state of emergency and the scenario that we're under, how can, can we actually feasibly adopt a school calendar not knowing when we're going to be back in school? Dr. Parker?
I believe, without further direction from the, from the Commonwealth regarding the schedule for next year, we can approve a school calendar budget, a school calendar for next year. And if the Commonwealth makes any adjustments, I'm sure all divisions in the Commonwealth will adjust accordingly depending on, on that, that directive. So at this time, it is appropriate to, to present and approve a calendar for next year that can be communicated to families and our staffs for next year, for next school year.
Any other questions? Are there being none? Ms. Buffalo, please call a rule.
Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Mrs. Searls-Lawes.
Four.
Dr. Best.
Four.
Ms. Alger.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Mr. Ely.
Four.
Mr. Harris.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number five, reports and information, 5.01, our special education annual plan. And here to, to, Dr. Poe? Will give us a briefing.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Hunter, Vice Chair Searls-Lawes, school board members, and Dr. Parker. I'm here this evening to provide information pertaining to the Division's Special Education Federal Flow Through Annual Plan application. Tonight's presentation is an annual requirement to inform the board of the proposed spending plans for funds allocated by the federal government based on the requirements outlined in the application. Local education agencies are required to submit this application every year pursuant to federal provisions of the Individuals with Disabilities Act of 2004, as well as the state regulations governing special education and related services to students with disabilities. Prior to the submission of the plan, the Virginia Department of Education requires that the local division present the plan to the local school board for approval and review the plan with their special education advisory board. An important aspect of the application includes verification of adherence to a list of assurances that have been delineated by the Virginia Department of Education. These assurances assist us in maintaining state and federal compliance and include providing a free and appropriate publication, education to all students, providing an individualized education program for each student with a disability, ensuring that students with disabilities are educated with non-disabled peers to the maximum extent possible, appropriate, and implementing policies and practices that prevent misidentification of students with disabilities by race or ethnicity. As of December 1st, student counts, services are being provided to 3,872 students in 12 distinct categories within our division. This slide displays the amount of students included within each category. Previously, Newport News Public Schools served 13 categories, however, at this time, we do not have any deaf or blind students. In addition to the assurances reviewed earlier, the annual plan requires that the division submit information on selected programs and expenditures. The local jail program, where services are provided by certified special education teachers to students with disabilities who are currently incarcerated. There are currently three special ed teachers working in this program. We are also required to maintain the same level of state and local funding for students with disabilities as the previous year, otherwise known as the maintenance of effort. The school division must report costs associated with providing special education and related stu, services to children in youth with disabilities that are above and beyond the costs of providing regular education programs to non-disabled students. Like all federal fund procedures, the division must have a proportionate set aside or PSA funds for private schools. Therefore, in collaboration with private schools, representatives, a determination is made to identify the most appropriate use of set aside funds for students with disabilities who are parentally placed in private schools. The private schools have primarily requested the funds for allotted speech language services. Finally, the bulk of the Title VI B and C grant funds are planned to be used for additional personnel to assist with our, our special needs population. Newport News Public Schools receives a little over $6 million from this grant. The recommendation being made this evening is that NMPS continue to utilize the funds for personnel costs to cover salaries and benefits of instructional personnel, a parent resource coordinator, and to provide extended school year services for students with disabilities who qualify, as well as using approximately $40,000 to assist in covering costs for needed professional development. In addition to these funds, there are local and state funding sources to provide all services necessary for Newport News Public School students. The Part C portion of this grant is used to fund the NMPS Program for Educating Exceptional Preschoolers, or as we know it, is PEEP, with two teachers, one paraprofessional, and a portion of the speech pathologist salary and benefits. Thank you for allowing me to present this information. The spending plan will be posted in your board docs for your review, as well as publicly posted for review over the next month prior to the board taking action on this item. At this time, I'm prepared to take any questions you may have, and I also have my phone a friend, Dr. Michelle Mitchell, ready to go as well if we need.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Poe. Are there any questions? I guess, John.
How do our, our, the ratio of teachers to the students, how are we comparing to other districts? Are we making sure our teachers not being overwhelmed with the population of students per classroom?
So, I don't know as relation to other districts, but we do follow the guidelines very closely for what is allowable for collaborative classrooms, as well as self-contained classrooms to make sure that we're not overloading teachers.
Thank you. And one more question, there's all, each classroom, do they have support staff? I know they have assistant. How many assistants do they have per classroom?
It really depends on the classroom, on how many assistants there are. I know with this grant, we will be able to provide 103 assistants across the division.
Wow, that's awesome. Thank you so much.
No problem.
I have a question.
I guess, Ms., yes, Ms. Alger.
Yes, does this cover preschool or is preschool a different budget?
It, it helps with some of our preschool for special ed, but there's also local budget and, and state budget that helps with that as well.
For the preschool, special education?
Correct. So the, this helps with our specific program for high need students.
Okay.
But we also have budgeted within the, the regular budget that you just approved, more special ed assistance for other pre-k programs across the division. So it's not only specifically, this helps and assists for PEEP, but it's not specifically only, the only funding source.
Okay.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, another question. I've heard different things about educating incarcerated youth. So I've heard we, in some instances, we don't have access to the incarcerated youth, and other instances, we do. Can you just, what portion of our funds educates the incarcerated youth from the federal dollars and what other mixture of funds goes in there?
So I can get that information for you because it's a lot broader than the special ed funding that we put into there, but I can talk with Ms. Rousseau and see if we can pull those funds for you, for what percentage we pay for that. This specifically only pays for the three special ed teachers to assist with our incarcerated youth.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Dr. Poe, thank you very much for that report.
Thanks, y'all.
Okay.
Stay well.
Okay. We'll move the agenda. 5.02 attendance report, 5.03 membership report, 5.04 construction report. All three of those reports were a part of your package. If there's no questions on those, we'll move to item 5.05, comments by our school superintendent. Dr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to say that it's, obviously, this evening, having to practice this social distancing has worked out very well for the board, and we are able to move forward with our planned agenda. I want to provide some coronavirus response information for the community, as well as the board, in this short, pre, short, um, short information update, and encourage everyone to continue to reach out, visit our school website, follow us on social media, both Twitter and Facebook, to, to continue to receive periodic updates. We're sending out information through a variety of sources of information, a variety of mediums, and we'd like to continue to keep our public informed as we move forward with new plans to provide service to our students. So with that being said, I do have some scripted remarks. I'm going to read through these because it's, obviously, and we'll post some of this information as well. But I'd like to first say good evening, and we obviously learned from the governor yesterday that the, we are extending school closures for the remainder of the academic school year to slow the spread of the coronavirus. Understandably, the news brought concern and worry to students, families, and staff. The continued school closure and other shutdowns will have a serious impact on our city and across the state. I want to assure our families that Newport News Public Schools will continue to support students and families during the closure. While we wait for guidance from the Virginia Department of Education in regards to teaching and learning, graduation requirements, and the issuing of standard and verified credits, we are taking steps to care for our students. We encourage our students and families to continue to use our at-home learning resources. Elementary lessons have been created for an additional 10 days or two weeks of learning, and we are being, they are being printed this week. The lessons will be posted on the at-home learning website and distributed at all, to all school sites on Monday. Our curriculum and development team is also preparing home learning plans for our middle school and high school students. Those plans will be posted online on Monday as well. Teachers will continue to contact and collaborate with students on lessons and other assignments to, to continue daily learning. Students should strive to complete all of their lessons. Our at-home learning site is updated regularly. Last week, additional resources were added for English language learners and special education students. Also included are foreign language assistance for middle and high school students, a library media page and resources, an elementary music challenge and game section, and physical education resources for all grades. To assist students, all teachers hold office hours from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00, and again, from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. To support the at-home learning, our technology staff distributed over 600 Chromebooks and hotspots to middle and high school students last week during a two-day checkout event at our meal distribution sites. Our technology staff is working with our secondary principals to distribute the remaining Chromebooks inventory to students on a waiting list on a need, per need basis. Our Child Nutrition Services Department will continue to provide meals-to-go for any student in need of lunch at 20, 20 different locations throughout the city. Our meals are available for pickup from 11:30 to 1:00 p.m. each weekday. Lunch and breakfast, lunch and a breakfast snack for the next day are available at seven school locations in addition, as part of those 20 locations. And these are, they are listed here on the screen. And the other sites are listed on the following screen here. And you can access that information online if you visit our website. We have all sites listed. Those, we, we have selects, purposely selected those sites. Added Ivy Baptist Church today as a new location. And as we add additional sites or change any sites, we will make that, send out communication to staff, to our community accordingly. So how, what progress have we made thus far? Thanks to our dedicated child nutrition team and security staff and volunteers, including some of our school board members who've, who've attended some of the sites, we're distributing today thousands of meals. We started around 1,100 meals a few days ago, and we rapidly increased that to over 3,200 meals being distributed on a day-to-day basis. Our goal is to continue to see that number increase, and to do that, we want, we want the, not only information to get out via electronics, but also by word of mouth. Please let people know where the sites are and what times to be there. We'd like to see those numbers continue to, to go up as we serve students. In an effort, our next steps, in an effort to keep our students, family, and staff informed, we will continue to provide timely updates and other helpful information, including more at-home resources such as a virtual field trip, virtual field trips, online yoga, and other classes, family-friendly games, and more. These resources will be sent to families later this week, so stay tuned. We're going to continue to find ways, parents, to help you keep your children engaged. And we'd also like you to set a regular schedule in your homes on a day-to, daily basis to ensure that there's academic time as well as recreational time. That's what they get in school. We would, we hope that you have the opportunity to provide that type of structure in your home as well. So moving forward, it's, as much to consider, we navigate this new normal altogether. It's, this is not a new process for all of us. This is very unusual, so we need to work together to make sure this works for our students. The Virginia Department of Education has given us some guidance on continued teaching and learning. Today, the state superintendent of public instruction announced that he is using his authority under Governor Northern's executive order to ensure that high school seniors who are on track to earn a diploma later this spring will be able to graduate. That is great news for our seniors. More information will be coming regarding those graduation requirements. We need to develop a plan to address student events like prom and graduation ceremonies and planning and hosting other events. Additionally, we need to ensure the continuity of, of our school division and the instructional programs for all of our students. So we are facing many challenges, this, these are uncertain times, but we will continue to do what is best for our students and families. I'd like to say, parents, I thank you for your continued support, understanding, and partnership as we work together to do what is best for our students. Our commitment is to keep you informed and provide the resources and support, and support learning at home. I also extend my thanks to our dedicated staff for our commitment to our students and families, many of whom are working through their own family circumstances. Yet, they are making sure that our students have what they need to remain engaged in learning and have access to meals-to-go and technology while making sure that all Newport News Public School operations continue in support of our students and families. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you for this opportunity. More information will be forthcoming in the coming days regarding the extended closure. We ask that everyone stay tuned and continue to work with those children. So thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. We'll move the item to number six. Again, here's an opportunity for the public to address the board. Are there any cards? Are there any cards? There any cards? There being none, we'll move to item number seven, matters by the school board. And Dr. Best? Do we have?
I have a couple of comments. Just like to remind our families to stay safe, stay healthy, and enjoy your time with your family to do some of the things that you would not have had an opportunity to do had this not happened. So just take advantage of that. I too would like to thank the staff that works for Newport News Public Schools. So many people are still working behind the scenes and in front of the scenes, even though the schools are closed, there are many, many people working, and I'd just like for them to know that we are appreciative for that. Had an opportunity to visit some of the feeding sites. Things were going very well, and people were very, very grateful and appreciative, and I'm proud to be a part of a school division that's looking out for families while the students are out of school. And then finally, I'm excited because tomorrow I will be riding with the Southeast Pull-Ups. Tomorrow at 2:00, there will be teachers and staff members from Newsom Park, Achievable Dream, and Discovery STEM, and we will be riding through various neighborhoods, just blowing horns and saying hello to students to let them know that we love them and have not forgotten about them. And I'm just encouraging students to remember social distancing and staying on your sidewalks. Don't run up to the cars. Teachers, stay in the cars as well, and we're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Best. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thank you to Dr. Parker and all the staff for the great leadership in presenting a balanced budget. And just let everyone know to stay safe. I think when you have crises like this, there's always a positive, and we learn something, we will learn something about ourselves, and we'll learn something about the system going forward. So I think this is also a time to capture the positives. And so just everyone be safe and take precautions. Make sure you tune in to some of the news, to listen to some of the professionals, some of the doctors and scientists and individuals like that. So I've learned a lot about this disease itself, I mean, not disease, but virus itself. So just inform yourself and stay safe. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Ely?
Thank you. I'd like to take this time to thank the whole staff, especially our staff for making sure all our children have computers at home. I saw a parent the other day at Walmart, and she was just so grateful that we gave out Chromebooks, and her child was able to still learn this. And so I want to thank the superintendent and staff for making sure all our children across the division had the materials that they need to continue to get their education and to learn at home, because a lot of our children, they want to learn. They're very sad that they can't attend school anymore, but we're, our teachers are going beyond the call of duty to make, and not just teachers' principles, the whole school division, we're working together as a team to make sure all our children's needs are met, whether it's getting good education, as well as our nutrition team is making sure all our children are fed. Our field, you got different churches doing different things. We're partnering with all the schools. It's just, the bus pull-ups, we're definitely making sure our children are fit. I also like to thank the superintendent and staff for making sure it was very dear to our superintendent heart that these kids have a graduation in a prom of some sort, so that it is on the mind of Newport News Public School System to make sure, because I can imagine you work, you go through, all these years of school, you're a senior, you're expecting this big day of graduation and a prom, and all of a sudden, it's taken away from you. So here at Newport News, we're definitely, and our superintendent, he's very passionate about making sure, he come up with a solution to make sure the kids have that special day. And we will get through this. We will, we will get through this. Definitely been a hard time for me as a small business owner, as well as the rest of the community, just the time as a community, we come together, we work together. And I'd just like to encourage everyone just to be positive, listen to what the news is saying, practice social distancing, because the sooner we can get through this and obey the rules of the doc, the doctors and the staff and the governor, we can get back to a normal life. So I just want to encourage everybody that it will be okay, and we will get through this. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. Mr. Brown?
Thank you. So I'll put on my Tidewater Regional Chairman hat for a few moments and try to share some news, because there has been, been questions. As of March 20, that was our last board of directors meeting. The regional networking forums have been canceled for the remainder of the year. That was, of course, prior to the governor issuing his directive, but that was when we met this past Friday, that was decided. However, for the Tidewater area and for the rest of Virginia as well, we had planned on having Secretary Carney be our keynote speaker at our regional networking forum on March 30. There will still be a forum on March 30. It will simply be virtual. So we're not calling it a regional forum any longer because it's being opened up to everyone in the state. We're going to have board members and, and elected officials from across the state of Virginia. Secretary Carney is going to be holding a COVID-19 town hall style of a meeting. He'll take questions about education like we had planned, and we're going to get the chance to hear him talk and get his perspective on education in Virginia, but as well get his perspective on how education in Virginia is going to be affected going forward under this, this crisis. So this will be, hopefully, a very informative meeting. We're the one region, so you can be proud, Tidewater, we were the one region that kept a virtual meeting going. All, all the regions had canceled, all the regions that had not had a meeting already just canceled their forums. So, but we're still having a, a virtual forum, and information will be coming out. Please check your, board members, please check your email for, for that information. Hopefully, you've seen other information and guidance that's come from the VSBA through my email address, and please keep that out of your spam folder, because there's hopefully good information that is there for you to receive. Then I'll just share the latest guidance that I have from the VSBA in terms of our operating posture going forward after the governor's declaration, is that, it's my understanding that there, the state superintendent is having regular calls with the superintendents around the state and, and providing that guidance. So the going-forward plan is that you should use your emergency powers. So under the Attorney General, his emergency, his General, his emergency, his interpretation, his memo that went out this past Friday, does allow for school boards to meet in a virtual setting to talk about the COVID-19 epidemic and their response to it. So you, please use, exercise your emergency powers to hold virtual meetings, to work with your superintendent on questions that you're receiving from the community. If you and your superintendent are unable to resolve questions that come up from the community, then please bring those questions back to myself, and I'll work with the president of the V S B A to get answers from the state for you, for questions that remain unanswered by the state superintendent and your superintendent. But please use that chain of communication to get information from your, get information for your community and help with your, your local board governance. And that is all I have for now, so I look forward to seeing everybody on March 30. It'll still be the same time in terms of the forum, and look forward to seeing all your faces online. It'll be, it'll be go-to meeting as opposed to, you know, high-fiving, so we're getting used to, getting used to that. That's been enjoyable and somewhat fun to, you cut out all the travel time, so there's some conveniences there that have come in, so hopefully we'll see a lot of you, and you'll have a chance to hear from the Secretary of Education at that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. This is Al.
Yes, thank you. A couple of things, I had a chance to visit a couple of the sites, Hogan Drive in particular, and to help with bilingual families, so I've been passing out lunches, and that particular day that I went, we fed over 200 kids, and I think it was amazing. And what was great is that, just keeping the families informed in terms of what's happening, because, you know, they're just, at times, well, they're hopeful that school was going to start, and the kids were asking me, when are we going to return? So it was really a big shock to hear about yesterday, when the governor announced that, you know, that was it. But that's just it, as far as the school building goes, it's not it as far as our learning, and I just want to emphasize that, especially for our students, to make sure that we are engaged. I think at these moments, it's, it's a little bit harder, because we're not necessarily there, you know, face-to-face, so we have to do it remotely, but I want to emphasize to parents to please make sure their children are engaged with their learning packets and with their work, and yes, there are going to be moments of frustration, but we're going to work through it. I can promise you that. So, but thank you to all the families that have worked together, and to all the teachers and principals, superintendent, everyone that has done their part in order for us to get through this, this first week. So thank you.
Thank you. I know we have missed our vice chairman, Ms. Charles Laws, on the line, not sure if she can hear you, but Ms. Charles Laws?
Yes, thank you. As I mentioned in our last meeting, my appreciation to Dr. Parker and his staff for the time and attention put into the budget process this year, from start to today's opportunity to vote. I feel that this is a comprehensive plan and very responsible approach to addressing the needs of the district and priorities of the board, so hats off to Dr. Parker and his team. Continuing with Dr. Parker, I need to thank you for your leadership, your late calls, and care for our district during this time. There is just an extended heartfelt thank you to all of the administrators, staff, and support staff, as NMPS responded quickly to the need to transition to remote instruction and to feeding our students. Thank you especially teachers for continuing to be our link, the link to our students. Our hearts ache right along with yours. Thank you for utilizing Zoom and Google Classroom, emails, text messages, calls to home to help us stay connected. Your sadness confirms what we, what we know to be true, that you care deeply for the well-being of our students. Your creativity is to be commended. I've been contacted to Zoom in and read stories to students and to take part in conversations, and I just know that we are going to get through this. Thank you for what you have done and what you will continue to do. Everyone, please stay safe, heed all precautions such that we can begin again with renewed purpose and vigor. So thank you all, and back to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Charles Laws. So I guess it's me, and be one of our last meetings for a while, I guess, we could do it virtual, but we may come together again. But there's great things happening in Newport News Public Schools, Dr. Parker and the staff, and every principal, every bus driver, cafeteria worker, teacher, counselor, I'm telling you, it's been a, it's been a blast. I know I'm in the right place. Newport News has really shined like a star. All I've heard on the streets, or in the grocery stores, or on Costco, has been, you know, what great job the school system has done, how we came together in a moment's time. So, starting with last week, when we got the notice that we were going to be out for two weeks, getting the packages together for the elementary school kids, getting the one-on-one devices to those families who did not have access to cable, having cable and Wi-Fi put in their homes, I mean, you can't ask for anything better than that. I know the kids, as Dr. Best would say, I've learned that from being home with my two daughters, that we're doing things that we've never done before. So do the boot camp. My oldest daughter started a boot camp for the family every other night, so we're doing boot camp together, we're playing games together, you can play cards, you can play Scrabble, if you've got it at home, all these word games that kids can play together, and I'm going to tell you, it's been some bonding time with my family, and so I know it's been hard, but we've been doing it. One other thing I was going to say, but I have to give this shout-out, on May, on March 6, I attended the father and daughter dance at Marshall Early Childhood Center, where 68 fathers and daughters came out on a Friday down in Downing Grove. Everyone was dressed, it was outstanding. I have to give a shout-out to their principal there, Ms. Keller, and her whole entire staff. They had dinner, I mean, when you're talking about, there's nothing happening in South District on a Friday night, fathers dressed up with their daughters, I mean, five-year-old daughters, man, I, my heart broke, so I do, unfortunately, won't have many of those to come through this year, but I do want to give that shout-out to the folks there. And last but not least, you know, we can come together by staying apart, if that makes sense, so come together by staying apart, at least for the next couple of weeks, and so stay safe out there, and we're kids, we're going to miss you. We're here, please call the schools if you have any questions, and good luck, continue to learn, and you'll be hearing from this board in a month or so. So with that being said, there's no more comments, I'm going to adjourn our meeting.